Tonight's meeting order, roll call, please.
Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you have a cellphone, iPad, iWatch, any other device, if you mind muting it, I'd appreciate it. I'll try to remind you. Turn this on after the meeting. Do we have a list of public comment?
No.
No.
Okay, we have two individuals, uh, who want to discuss what's on the agenda tonight, the CDBG funds. Taylor?
Taylor.
Taylor, I'm sorry. If you'd like to come up, give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Taylor Hinton. I live at 912 South Morgan Street in Meadville. Um, and I would just like to go on record saying I would love to see the CBDG funds go primarily to housing in our community. Um, I think the funds going to housing will meet our goals, uh, meet the goals of the grant specifically, um, around, and also the housing needs of our community. So I think we have a lot of residents who are in need of affordable housing, um, and putting the funds toward housing would help those folks. Um, and also, we have a lot of issues around blight, and we want to reinvest in communities, um, with those issues. So I think putting funds towards, um, housing primarily would benefit our community, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, you want to go ahead and take the podium, give us your name and address, please?
I am Ian Carbone. I live at 912 South Morgan Street in Meadville. I serve on the Board of Common Roots, which is working on a housing project. Like to encourage, um, this project to be considered for use of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, we've been rehabbing a property on South Main Street, largely with volunteer labor, and require funds for materials to, to finish the project. It's, as I mentioned, it's largely been done with volunteer labor. It's brought a lot of this neighborhood together. It's brought a lot of volunteers to the area. It's created a lot of interactions with the neighborhood. And it has the potential to create healthy, uh, well-built housing for low-income families, which not only helps the health and likelihood of those individuals, but if it's built well and built in an energy-efficient way, it creates more disposable income to support local businesses. And so, in the ways that it builds community and supports the economy, could do a tremendous amount of good for our community. That's all I have.
Ian, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Could you describe the project itself, number of units, cost of the project? Is it affordable housing? Is it rent-controlled, age-restricted, any of those specs?
Um, those, in terms of who it would be rented to, and for how much, and with what support, I don't believe those details have been completely ironed out yet. Uh, we have a long way to go just to get the building habitable. Um, but yeah, it's a, a single building that was previously a duplex with two units. And we will be, um, rehabbing it into four, uh, you know, single-bedroom apartments, which, in our research, we found that there's, uh, not a lot of other options for those single-bedroom apartments in Meadville. So, um, it fulfills an important niche for Meadville housing needs.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Yep. Are the community gardens at that property too, isn't it, where the close by, uh, farm and property, wasn't it?
It's, it's, uh, adjoining the Redevelopment Authority owns the property next door, and that's where the community garden is.
I have no one else. I'm going to make sure we didn't overlook anyone. Katie, put that in the records, please. Uh, Andy, the COVID-19 disaster emergency update.
Uh, thanks, Your Honor. I'll just remind council that, uh, the city technically still operates under a declaration of disaster emergency resp- related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I don't have any specific updates, but would remind the public that, um, the, of, of essentially the basics of the governor's most recent order, which still requires, uh, masks when you essentially leave your house and you are in the public and cannot social distance. So that would be masks on, in businesses, restaurants, et cetera. Uh, the limitation on, uh, gatherings, um, of events of 250 people or more, and meetings of 25, essentially. So we continue, so obviously, there, you know, there are some, we've not completely outright eliminated the issuance of public assembly permits. Um, anytime there is a permit application, we, we request that an applicant, either meet those guys, demonstrate to us how they meet those guidelines, and provide to us then also what we're calling a COVID sa- COVID-19 safety plan, um, of how they'll address sanitation, hand-washing, or sanitizer, mask-wearing, et cetera. That's all I have on that, Your Honor.
Notice of executives, meetings, Katie?
Your Honor, uh, executive session was held on July 15th, 2020 to discuss real estate and litigation.
And, Your Honor, we met this evening at 5:00 PM just prior to this meeting to discuss litigation and real estate again.
Approval of minutes, motion, please?
Aye.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Katie Communications, please. I believe there are...
Uh, Your Honor, uh, the first communication was an email received from Ron Erwin. Uh, it says that he, it is his understanding that only residents of the city of Meadville are able to sit on the various boards after one year of residency per the policy that council had previously adopted. He says he finds this to be unfair and possibly borderline taxation without representation, and that he believes the policies need changed or amended to allow anyone paying taxes or residing within the city limits to be able to serve on the various boards.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'll just note that we briefly referenced this communication in our last meeting, had a brief discussion, which generated a new business item. Uh, where is it?
Under old business.
Oh, it's under old business, I'm sorry. Um, and we'll, we'll visit that discussion later in the meeting.
Thank you. Good, Kate.
Um, Your Honor, I have a letter here from Seneca Kim. She says that she is a rising junior at MASH, and she is writing to request that council not renew the contract for the Meadville Area Senior High School's School Resource Officer. Uh, she says she knows that, knowing that there is someone with ready access to a gun inside the school does not ease her mind at all, and it makes it harder to concentrate. She says school should be a safe place, and implementing a police officer on the grounds makes it automatically less safe, and she would ask that council consider this when making their decision.
Question on that, was that discussed at the last meeting, or wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, we responded to that, correct?
So, I mean, well...
Uh, the communication was not discussed at the last meeting because it was received after the cutoff point for the agenda?
But it was discussed in an open meeting, correct?
But we, uh, we took a vote.
We took action, right.
We did take action on that. Um, but I guess on this, on this point too, and I think it's, put me into the next one, um, I think we have agreed that, like verbally agreed what the cutoff point for communication to council is. I wonder if it's worth putting in writing, um, to the city's website or something, so folks know.
You mean receiving the information by Friday?
By Friday afternoon. Is that on the website anymore?
Uh, I honestly don't know.
We can check that out. Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, Your Honor, I have a letter, or an email here from Megan Willis. She is writing to request that council not renew the contract for the Meadville Area Senior High School's School Resource Officer. She suggests that in replace, uh, place of a school resource officer, the high school should implement therapists whose sole job it is to support students. She indicates that guidance counselors are unable to provide the therapeutic services needed because they are overstretched, and having a police officer within the school causes more tensions, um, and that they have been even more intense due to these past months.
Thank you.
Letter, Dean?
Uh, Your Honor, this is a letter from Kevin Mullen of Porter Consulting Engineers. He is just writing to notify council that the city of Meadville is applying to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for a general permit for Bridge Number Four, which is the bridge from, on Liberty Street over Mill Run, for repairs. Uh, the project will make repairs to the bridge recommended in the bridge inspection report submitted under the Pennsylvania Local Bridge Inspection Program.
Counsel, I'll just note that this is standard communication, and is required under DEP General Permitting Regulations that are required of the host municipality. We are the host municipality, and we own this bridge, and we are rehabbing this bridge with grant funds from Act 13, uh, provided by Crawford County. Um, so the design phase, once permitted, the design phase underway, there will be a bidding process, there will be contracts that come back before council, but this is just really the very first step in the project.
Letter, Katie?
Uh, Your Honor, this is from Deborah Redman, and it is regarding, um, invasive wisteria within the city, and she is requesting that council pass an ordinance against the sale cultivation of wisteria, um, specifically Chinese wisteria.
Very, thank you. Andy Manager's report.
I'll just note, I think, Autumn, you've had, um, further communication with Ms. Redman, is that correct or not?
I did, I did. She had reached out to, to Leroy and I, and, um, uh, not too long before the meeting, my apologies, but I did send around, um, a, a, a report. It was almost an academic report that she had prepared that gives more context to these photos, um, uh, essentially upon, like, further communication with Mrs. Redman. It sounds like, um, the wisteria on, on the property is, is posing some, some damage that is potentially of concern, um, for her landlord, uh, and is, uh, is causing trouble on, on the property with plumbing. Uh, so she and I have been in communication about that, but it has since still...
So this would not be something typically the city would regulate. It's probably more of a Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture or other regulatory agency. Um, do you think any further follow-up is required with Ms. Redman from a staff perspective?
Um, I think, so, so my, my conversation with her hasn't been about the ordinance or about specifically around, um, regulating, uh, sale cultivation of wisteria. So if we could address that, if staff could specifically maybe just address, um, that concern with a recommendation that, um, and make potentially even a connection with the PA Department of Ag. In terms of her concern on her property itself, um, I'm happy to continue, uh, trying to support her in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy Manager's report.
Your Honor, I've got a number of topics to update council on. Still a very busy and active construction and project season. In terms of paving, um, council's aware we've got multiple paving sources of, of funding. Uh, the local federal aid route project, um, uh, is near conclusion. If you have driven on Leslie Road from between North Main Street and the West Mead Township line heading towards the fairground, you would have noticed that when that project was initially completed, there was sort of rideability issues in terms of sort of thumpers at driveways that we, um, worked with Pendote and the contractor on a corrective action plan that resulted in grinding. Um, we weren't happy with that corrective action and the result of that. Um, and so, in the end, there will be a, a new overlay. Um, there'll be some additional grinding, but then a new overlay of, of top surface. Um, so, um, that's still unresolved, but we're working on conclusion with that, with the contractor and Pendote. Um, so what you see there now today in terms of a ground surface will not be the final product. Don't know the final timeline on that, but, um, the city capital project underway is the, um, essentially the complete rebuilding of Ellicott Court with all new curbs, gutters, curbs anyhow, tying into existing driveway aprons and, and paving. Uh, when we had removed the bricks there, um, the base is done. If weather holds by the end of the week, that project might be, the paving might be done on Ellicott Court. All the curb work is done. Um, and the contractor, Lindy Paving, uh, in terms of our various CDBG-funded streets, that is currently underway as well. Council's aware that the Porter Street Footbridge project is, is underway. Ashley Porter reports that that is, um, is going very well in terms of, you know, the things that they found, not no major surprises, um, and, and is progressing nicely. Still do not have a completion date there, but, uh, reports that things are going okay. Uh, we've already talked about the, uh, repairs to the launch at Bicentennial Park. We've awarded the contract. Staff is preparing notification that that launch will be closed, sort of upstream and downstream. Do we know yet, Gary, a timeline on that yet?
Two to three weeks.
Okay, before the project might start?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. The DEP building, we're engaged in a multimillion-dollar overhaul of the HVAC system and the lighting system. The lighting system is complete. Uh, new, all new LED lighting, uh, which will help with operating costs there. And the HVAC system, I think the, the new unit, uh, was placed on the rooftop a few weeks ago. On Monday morning, the ductwork was delivered and the old unit taken down, uh, and a new system will be commissioned and put into service within the next week anyhow. Um, so that, that project has progressed nicely. Uh, we've had the added benefit that DEP employees continue to work from home right now, so there's been very little occupancy of the building, just on an as-needed basis, which has really allowed us to have good access to that, to get that project done. Staff has still continued to work. Um, as you, as you've read in the paper, I'm sure, that the initial CARES Act funding that was provided to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and then the legislature provided that to the counties to distribute on essentially a per capita basis to each county. Um, we will continue to, uh, I think I had reported that lost revenue is not an eligible expense under that program, that we can really only apply for direct COVID-related invoice-backed expenses. Um, we do think, we had some, uh, our unemployment cost during a period of furlough, where we had up to 18 employees on full or partial furlough. We think that, um, our, our share of unemployment cost might be an eligible expense, so we'll go after that. So, we're still evaluating that and we'll report back to council once we, uh, make a submission to the, to Crawford County Commissioners. This is a good transition into the revenue side. So we are here at August 5th, and we were, um, just this morning, Debbie was looking at our July revenue numbers. And so, year, looking, uh, sorry, year-to-date in a comparison of 2019, a year ago to today, uh, so this isn't necessarily a comparison to budget, but from, just look engaging against last year, right? Um, the earned income tax is down $22,000 a year-to-date from where it was last year. That's been holding fairly steady since May. I mean, uh, May or June is when we, um, had that first loss of that $20,000 to $25,000 dollar, um, year-to-date loss of revenue is held kind of constant, so we'll continue to see what that looks like. Real estate figures have also vacillated a little bit. I was really concerned with April collection. Initially, April 30th is the deadline for face value taxes. Council took action along with the county to extend the face value to August 31st. And real estate collection, year-to-date, again, compared to 2019, is down $53,000 a year-to-date. Um, now, again, I remind citizens that August 31st is the deadline at which to pay your real estate taxes at face value. And that was an extension provided by, um, the city of Meadville and Crawford County. So, we encourage citizens to take advantage of that, uh, face value, otherwise they will go to a, um, penalty phase through the end of the year. So really, combined, just those two figures, we're looking at our local services tax. Local services tax have held pretty constant. It's down this month, but we think that's just a timing and, and when that revenue was posted, so we're looking at that. But combined between earned income tax and real estate tax, we're down about $75,000 a year-to-date in revenue. And we'll continue to monitor that.
Andy, I do have a question, because we, we're not park, uh, collecting parking meters.
We are.
But we are now, and we didn't.
We, yep, so I don't...
Do you know what the loss was on that?
I don't have in front of me the parking fund numbers. It'll appear in your monthly report for August, um, so...
I'm just curious.
Or for July, I mean. So in another week, we'll know what the numbers were through July, year-to-date. But yes, revenue is down. Yeah, I, I think, I don't have it in front of me, Your Honor, but...
Okay.
Parking fund revenue will be down. I'll, I'll make note of that in a future report to council.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just check my list here. So, really, probably, one of the most important actions that I need to inform council this evening, um, I think I had informed council back in March, probably a week before COVID hit. Fire Chief Haskell had come to me announcing his, uh, intent to retire in August. On August 24th, I believe, is the anniversary date of 32 years of service to the city of Meadville as a firefighter in the city of Meadville. And Chief Haskell came to me in March declaring his intent to retire on August 24th. So, I, Gary Johnson and I actually began the process and the search for our new, uh, the, an internal search for our new fire chief. Uh, we conducted shift-wide, department-wide interviews with each firefighter in the department back in May. Uh, we, um, allowed any interested candidates that were interested in the fire chief position, submitted a letter of tent, intent. Um, Gary Johnson and I met with each of them, interviewed each of them, had some really good, great conversations. Were very encouraged by, um, the vision, the passion, um, the commitment to our fire department, to our community. It's a very much an enjoyable process. So, tonight, um, of course, I'm publicly announcing then Chief Haskell's intent to retire on August 24th, and I'm reporting to council that I have appointed Captain Patrick Wiley to be the next fire chief, effective, uh, upon, uh, Fire Chief Haskell's retirement on August 24th. Uh, Captain Wiley's been with our department, with our city department, since 2002, and has 18 years of service, several which is a captain. I don't have his captain ship numbers right in front of me, but, um, Pat very over, has already oversees our EMT program, um, and, um, has been, has been very active in the community. And so, I report that to council that, uh, Patrick Wiley will, has been appointed the new chief. It would be my intent that we would swear him in, um, at the August 19th council meeting for his service to be effective on that August 24th date. And typically, under our council manager form of government, where, um, the city manager has the authority to, to make those appointments, right, the department had appointments, um, especially in police and fire. There are sort of nuanced language in third-class city code, and so we, uh, the city manager typically asks council for a motion to concur with the city manager's appointment of Patrick Wiley. And so I do that now, asking council for a motion to concur with my appointment.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We want to thank Pat for doing that. Um, I, I think that's a good choice. And of course, we hate to see Evan leave, but we'll be...
Yep, both, both will be here on August 19th, and we'll, um, uh, council will get to re, re, get reintroduced to, to Pat, right? You don't get to see them regularly, but, um, Pat will be here, and we'll have our swearing in, uh, probably at the very beginning of the meeting on August 19th. Thank you, Your Honor.
Um, Andy, under the manager's report, I do want to, uh, we received communication from Joe Galbo and, and residents up there on Ellicott Court. Not very often do we get, uh, what I call thumbs up, but, um, contacted us and sent us letters and thanking us for the cooperation that they've had between the contractor, the city, and getting that project done. So I just want to make, uh, council aware that, uh, we received a nice comment from the neighbors up there in that project.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Yeah, when we, when we replace curbs, that, uh, that impacts lots of driveways in terms of access to driveways, in terms of meeting grades for existing driveway levels, and so, I think our staff has gone above and beyond to try and accommodate and, and meet those needs. Uh, Your Honor, under my manager's report, there is a notice of zoning hearings. We've taken the practice, and, and Gary just wants, would give council an update on the next zoning hearing and the subject thereof.
Sure. So we have one for this month. It involves, uh, the Quick Stop. You may have noticed that Pine and South Main, they're expanding that significantly, expanding the convenience store to make it, you know, more of a full-service establishment, and a gas station, of course. So, uh, this special exception, uh, request is, is regards a pole sign that they're going to, they're planning to put at the corner there, Pine and South Main. Uh, regards the, uh, the digital message center for the, uh, actually for the gas prices, it'll be digital. And under ordinance, that's considered an electronic sign, because it's able to be controlled by computers, um, or electronic means, and so they need to go to the zoning hearing board for approval as a special exception for that digital message board. That's what's pertaining to.
Thank you. Anything else, Andy?
Uh, yeah, I thought of one other item. So, I think council, back in June, um, council passed a resolution in, in cooperation with the Redevelopment Authority, um, was a proposal to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to essentially terminate the French Creek Valley Enterprise Zone, and to create sort of two funding sources. Those are, uh, that's a program from the mid-'90s that was, uh, where grants were received by the Redevelopment Authority to relend, uh, to eligible businesses. The Redevelopment Authority and the city jointly submitted a proposal to DCED to terminate the enterprise zone, uh, and to really establish two programs. One was a blight fund to address blighted properties and, um, and to, to essentially tackle that need in the community. So with the goal of using those funds to leverage other funds, where frankly, those, a portion of the enterprise, uh, zone funds would be, uh, moved to the city, transitioned to the city for the city to create a blight fund that would be working in partnership with the Redevelopment Authority. So the, one of the requirements from DCED is that those funds be loaned to projects. Well, it can be on various terms for various uses, but it would have to be loaned to, um, to a developer or to the authority. Uh, and so we're, DCED approved that, and we are now working, will be working with staff and legal counsel to establish that blight fund in the city and the parameters for that. And then also, the second program, uh, was Continued Loan Program, a working capital program, uh, specifically for COVID relief, at least is the initial focus. And the Redevelopment Authority is working on draft guidelines, has a meeting next week. They consider some final guidelines before pushing out additional loan resources for businesses in the city, and some to county businesses as well, right, the sort of a split, um, that was proposed. And, um, so those resources will be available as well, um, for, for small business in the city. And, and once those are finalized by the Redevelopment Authority, we can share them with council, and, um, so that council is also aware of those program guidelines. But probably the next action for council will be establishment of the blight fund, um, to, to begin now, working on blight projects. That's all, Your Honor.
Any questions for Andy on manager's report?
Do we have a sense of the timeline on the COVID relief fund for businesses, what that would?
The working capital loan program?
Uh, so, Redevelopment Authority meets next Wednesday. There's just a couple of details that need hashed out. The application, for the most part, is ready to go. Uh, and the Redevelopment Authority has already authorized, uh, meeting the fourth Wednesday of each month to review any applications received. Uh, so depending on if we receive any applications between next Wednesday and the end of the month, um, they will meet that fourth Wednesday of this month to review applications.
So it looks like the program will be ready to go at their next meeting pending RDA?
Yep.
I think what we've found initially, or Mary Ann has found, is that it'll, it, there are lots of competing funding sources at this point, right? There's the, um, the county now has a CDBG small business grant program. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has a, its own loan program. Um, there's, of course, the federal PPP, Paycheck Prediction Program, uh, Loan Grant Program. So there's lots of things in the marketplace, and, and I expect, the, if in fact, there's additional federal legislation, and, um, relief from the federal government might include additional funding. So it'll be, it'll be questionable as to how valuable, at least initially, these funds will be, but will, the Redevelopment Authority will attempt to make them available and, and meet those needs. There's just lots of pieces of the puzzle now.
Sure. To that point, Andy, I mean, what, uh, can you speak at all to where a business should hit, right? There's lots of different loan grant opportunities, and it's hard to know, it's hard to keep track, and it's hard to know... and it's hard to know what might be appropriate for different businesses. Is there like a central clearinghouse or a point of contact locally that they should reach out?
So, I would encourage people to, I mean, probably the best resource initially is the Economic Progress Alliance of Crawford County, who accesses a number of loan and grant funds. But other than, this is the challenge of government, right? You've got federal, state, and local government. They're, they're not an expert on the PPP program, for instance, right? They have no, they don't touch that money, they're not involved with it, they don't have any regulations. But I guess in terms of businesses seeking assistance who are, who are wandering in the desert, could contact Economic Progress Alliance or Mary Ann at the redevelopment authority to, to be pointed to the right resources.
Andy, do we still have small business development centers through Gannon University and Clarion and some other schools?
We do.
And might that not be a good resource?
It, it would be, it would be another resource for businesses as well, especially for, for the same clearinghouse or same resources. They do, probably most of their work is on business planning for new business, for existing, and either new businesses or support for existing businesses in terms of cash flow projections and whatnot, but it could also be another resource, you're right. Shane at the Small Business Development Center, Shane's last name?
Foster.
Foster, thank you.
They're connected to the Economic Progress Alliance, is that what makes sense?
Right.
On, on CARES Act funding for the city, have we considered the additional technology expenses that we've incurred and any expenses for moving to this building at all?
We have, so there's been real no expense here per se. We are, we have shared information in terms of technology with the county to see what might be eligible. So, they are conferring with their auditors to confirm what eligible expenses are as well. So, there are some expenses we could make with respect to access, I'm sorry, website access and improvements. I'm hesitant to expend those funds if, if in fact, they're not reimbursable under the act. So, we are researching those.
What, internet in this building, I don't know if that would be helpful for staff at all, but maybe somebody can consider too.
All right. Any other questions for Andy? Okay, we'll move on to old business. A, authorities board and commission appointments. So, we are going, Andy, one-
I'll just, I'll just set it up before, Katie does have a resolution prepared for council's consideration, but in terms of discussion, the, the policy that council adopted on, at their July 1st meeting, Resolution 52, adopted the appointment process for city authorities boards and commissions. The, the, I don't have, I've got the amended one, but anyhow, the initial draft essentially said that residents could apply. And Mr. Irwin's, thank you, I'm not good with too much paper, as you can attest from my office floor. The, and, and so in response, so Mr. Irwin's communication this evening said, are, you know, are you in fact, is it residence only? And to be honest with you, I don't know that council focused on that in the course of the discussion. And so, what's attached following the resolution and a proposed amendment to the policy are various sources of legislation that control who is eligible to serve on, on different boards and authorities. So, for instance, the PA, the Pennsylvania Urban Redevelopment Act governs the redevelopment authority and who is eligible. I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but in that example, for instance, in the case of cities of the third class, of which we are, majority of members of the authority shall be residents of the city, and the remainder may be non-residents who own and operate businesses in the city in which the authority operates. Then we have the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, which governs the Meadville Area Recreation Authority, which is a joint authority with West Mead and Vernon Townships. We have the Meadville Area Water Authority, we have the Meadville Area Sewer Authority, which is also a joint authority with West Mead Township, and the Meadville Market Authority. We've tried to highlight in yellow there that where members of the board, each of whom shall be a taxpayer and maintain a business for a citizen of the municipality in which he is appointed. And then there's a provision if it's a joint authority. There's the Municipal Planning Code that governs the Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board. There's the Pennsylvania Housing Authorities Law, which governs the Meadville Housing Authority, and additional federal legislation that governs, governs membership. So, and then our local ordinance, right? We have the Beautification Committee, the Shade Tree Commission, Law Cabin Preservation Committee, Streetscape Review Committee, which were all created by ordinance of this council, and those require, we don't have those highlighted. So anyhow, so for Shade Tree, for instance, shall have five members, all of whom shall be residents of the city. So anyhow, the point in providing this information to council for further discussion is whether or not you wish to amend your policy to, to require that only residents, as it's written and adopted right now, that only residents could be eligible to apply, which would be technically more restrictive than many of the governing legislation that I've quickly reviewed, or if it's your desire to follow the governing legislation as, as reviewed here.
I don't think it was our intent to leave out somebody that had the ability to serve because over the years, we've had a difficult time trying to fill these positions off and on. Jim, you can contest to that, to years you've been on council. So, I don't think it was any council's desire to limit that. So, I, I'd like to see that changed to where, if you were a property owner, business owner, taxpayer, you can serve on these different boards as long you fall within the guidelines of the, the state and federal.
There is a, there will be a point of contention in the future because various authorities and their acts have slightly different requirements. For example, redevelopment authority, you must be, you may be a resident or maybe non-resident. But someone else, or in another area, Municipal Authorities Act, you have to be a citizen, which is not the same as a resident. So, those are issues that may come before us in the future if you have someone who wants to be appointed to a position who happens not to be a citizen, and that particular board commissioner and authority requires citizenship.
But it's nothing different than, as is currently-
Right, but just so you know that there may be, may be an issue in the future.
I, I agree with Lee Roy that we, there was no intent there, and I'd like to do what he's saying with the, like the people that don't live in the city.
Sir. Every time you make a new ordinance, there's always something in there that you kind of overlook that, not intentionally.
Actually, they haven't slipped by us.
Yeah, that's slipped by all of us, I believe. Does any other council member make comments? This, this is ready?
So, the, the proposed amendment then is on, follows the resolution page and is highlighted in yellow under the "to apply," and it's, and it's amended to read, "Any person making an application to serve on the City of Meadville Authority Board and Commission must meet the eligibility requirements of the controlling body of legislation." For example, Municipal Authorities Act or redevelopment Act, Municipal Planning Code, PA Housing Authorities Law, local ordinance, et cetera, and be over the age of 18. So, the, the challenge on our end will be to attempt to make clear to people interested in serving on these that they know and understand that, yes, in fact, or no, you don't have to be a resident or a citizen or a business owner. And we've spent lots of time creating this handy guide, so we will attempt to somehow post that on our website as well.
I have a motion to amend the policy.
I think she needs to read it, doesn't she?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always take you away from that.
Oh, that's okay. "I resolve by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas on July 1st, 2020, pursuant to Resolution Number 52 of 2020, council adopted the Appointment Process for City Authorities Boards and Commissions policy, which states that an individual must be a resident of the City of Meadville to serve. And whereas the eligibility requirements of the adopted Appointment Process policy conflict in some instances with the eligibility requirements as set forth by the governing legislation at the local, state, and federal levels. And whereas the Council of the City of Meadville desires to amend the Appointment Process eligibility requirements in order to maintain, or remain consistent with those eligibility requirements as set forth in the legislation that governs, governs each specific authority at the local, state, and federal levels. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Meadville by and through the Council of the City of Meadville, that the attached Appointment Process for City Authorities Boards and Commissions is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached hereto, as and for a binding policy of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms effective August 5th, 2020. Be it further resolved that the attached Appointment Process shall remain in effect until revised or terminated by further Resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville."
Motion, please. No move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Thank you.
Counsel, with that final amendment, I think we now have a, the application is ready to go. We'll begin to roll out that new application pursuant to the policy, and we'll begin the, to implement the process.
Thank you.
I'll just note the, you might want to change the revision date on the bottom of the policy.
Under old business letter resignation.
Your Honor, I have a letter from J. Maxwell Holt. Currently, Mr. Holt serves on the Housing Authority. He says this letter serves as notice that he is resigning from the Housing Authority Board effective December 31st, 2020. That is the end of his term. In order to find a suitable candidate, he is giving necessary notice to find a replacement. And if he, we, if council needs assistance or referrals in identifying a replacement, he would be happy to help.
Motion to accept resignation?
I have a motion to accept.
Second?
I'll second.
Well, we want to thank him for his time being on the Housing Authority. We appreciate the, the work that he has done. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Under new business ordinance, a fine, first and final reading, bond ordinance.
So, Katie, do you want to start with this? Pat, you can make your way up to the, to the podium while Katie will read the ordinance summary, and then we'll discuss.
An ordinance of the City of Meadville enacted August 5th, 2020, formal action constituting a debt ordinance under the Local Government Unit Debt Act authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $13 million. Covenanting to pay and pledging tax and power for the payment of the bonds, establishing a sinking fund, and appointing a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, interest rate, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for the payment thereof, accepting a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Departments of Community and Economic Development, gratifying and directing certain actions of officers, and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds.
Motion to- Motion, please.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Open for discussion. Andy?
Your Honor, before we get too far, so I'll remind you that debt ordinances are first, they're, they're single readings only under, under relevant state legislation, so it does not require a, a second reading or a third and final. So, I'll just quickly, Pat Healy is our bond counsel. Follows on the heels of the visit of John McShane, who is our essentially debt advisor, financial advisor with respect to our debt. John was here to review the opportunity to refinance some existing bond series. And the next step is to pass the ordinance, which authorizes the refinancing of that. I'm going to turn it over to Debbie quickly, though. So, since our last meeting, Debbie has had further communication with John on some opportunities that she'll review. You'll see that the, the maximum debt here, the aggregate principal amount up to $13 million, is essentially, Debbie will explain that figure and how we got there.
So, as, excuse me, as John was reviewing the, the other bonds that we had in our portfolio, he discovered with the market so favorable that he elected or asked, we talked about him adding those bonds to the current refunding. Now, we traditionally would never do them by themselves, or even to two little bonds together because the savings, it, it wouldn't make sense. But as we're refunding, as we put them all together, it makes sense, provided the market stays in, in good shape. I mean, right now, with putting these bonds together, we potentially could save a little over $600,000. Now, that won't, you know, again, remind you, that's if everything stays as, as where we are now. The way we have it structured is we were going to take most of that savings upfront in, in bond reduction and payment, not cash. It will leave you, it'll save on the general fund. I think the first year, if everything goes well, it'll be about $500,000 in the 2021 budget. It won't affect 2020. We still will do the 10-1 payment as, as it stands, but this will go into the 2021 budget. Now, there will be additional savings in the 2022 budget because, because of the amount we're saving, we couldn't take it all at once. So, I, I believe it's like $538,000 if all goes well in the 2021 budget. So, again, that's why, as he was looking at it, the market is just, he's never seen it this, at this point, so, again, like, everything goes well, we, we should have substantial savings.
When's the time frame on that?
So, we were hoping to price mid-September, which should be plenty good shape for us to know about the budget. Once we price, it's set, and then we won't actually close until later, later on. Probably not until, I'm not sure, 2021, in the beginning of the year will we actually close, or will we close before the end of the year?
Before the end of the year.
Okay. But it, like I said, it'll go in effect for the 2021 payment, the 4-1 payment. So, that's good news all around for our budget.
Good.
Pat, what do you have, Ed?
To get started, so John and the city can get to the point of pricing the bonds in mid-September, the ordinance you have before you, which some of you have seen before, basically authorizes the issuance of tax-exempt bonds, the City of Meadville general obligation bonds, in an amount up to $13 million. The actual amount that will be issued will be less than that, but under the state law, with the ad that we had before the meeting in relation to this ordinance, and the ordinance itself, we pick a big number to give room to John in structuring the bond issue. Because if we went over by 10 bucks, we'd have to do this whole process over again. So, that's where the $13 million comes in. As Debbie said, he's added, from when I first started talking with him, we were doing the 2015 Series A and Series B bonds, the 2013 Series B bonds, and 2012 Series B bonds. All in a single bond issue, which would be the, the city's 2020 Series C bonds, because, as you may recall, in the beginning of the year, you did 2020 Series A and B bonds. So, now we're up to C. This pledges your full faith, credit, and tax and power, authorizes city, designated city officials to enter into the bond purchase agreement when, when Benning actually prices the bonds, be it in September or, or earlier, to accept the purchase proposal from Benning. The usual routine is, I believe John gets on the phone with Debbie and Andy, and he gets on the phone maybe with you, Lee Roy, and talk, you know, just so you're all aware as to where the savings level is at that point, which is really what it's all about. Zion's Bank is your paying agent. They have been your paying agent, all your bond issues are through them, so the debt service payments that are made by the city to pay the bonds every April and October continue to be made through Zion's Bank. Your payment dates will be April and October, principal due in October, interest, principal and interest due in October, interest only in April. And it authorizes me to basically do all the documentation for the filing with DCED that's required in order to get approval from DCED, which we need before you can actually issue the bonds. Basically, a 20-day period after I get everything they want in their hands. And they're working from home now, too, so it's a bit of a challenge for those folks, but it seems to be working sufficiently well. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or-
I just might add that we're just a little over $10 million refunding. We went to $13 million, as, as Pat said, just for a little room. But currently, the way it stands now, we're a little over $10 million refunding.
This is the last set of bonds we have, too.
I believe there's, it won't be for another several years before more bonds will become callable. And the reason why he originally said there were only a few, like I said, these last two that he put in really didn't make sense to do anything with because they were already very low, and he was very, he didn't feel that they would ever go that low, but here we are. So, putting these all together should be our last for several years.
And the 2013 C is not refundable because it has such a quick maturity date, 10-1-
And the 2013 C is not refundable because it has such a quick maturity date, 10-1, 22, is that right?
Well, so we, we couldn't get everything done to affect the 10-1 payment. So that's why we're, it, Johnson, it was almost impossible to affect right now. So that's why we're going to go into the 2021 budget with any kind of savings.
But I think you're right, Jim. Some of the, even these new, two new bonds had, only had six, seven, eight years left to payment on them. Typically, you wouldn't refund them that late in the amortization schedule uh, because of the cost of issuance and, and whatnot. And so, but with the, with the market as such, it made sense to, to attempt to grab those.
And traditionally, if they were much larger, they would have their own series. But seeing as how these bonds are, are over, and as Andy said, in five to seven years, we elected to save money and put them in one, put them as one bond. Now, they didn't extend the term of the, of the bond, it's still the same ending, it's just refunded, and the savings, and, and it's really the interest rate. Now, there was a cost to us to do this, but the savings out, by far outweigh the cost to, of issuing the, of redoing.
Doing all three of them?
I'm sorry?
Doing those, all three of them?
Putting, putting them all together as one series did, did save money as opposed to issuing different series. So we, we elected to put them all together.
But the bonds cannot be purchased until, or September?
But we can't, we can't price until September because they're not colboyably till ten, ten, October. So it, it just, John said it would be nearly impossible to get, to get the, the whole process done. We have to do a ratings call, you didn't have to do a ratings call yet, we, we still have some work to do to get to there.
Let's hope it's hold.
Yes. Well, we're definitely hoping to get it done by the election. We're hoping to have it priced.
Make your investments. We'll stay away from that one. Anything else?
Any election triggers?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deb, thank you for doing all the research. That's good news for us.
Yes, outstanding news.
Counsel, after you do the vote, we'll need some signature tonight yet before we leave the room or the building.
Uh, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, any other questions from council? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Katie, uh, we have a resolution.
No, no, we have discussion.
Discussion. Sorry about that. On the, uh, authorizing conveyance and signatures. Yeah, discussion on 2020, uh, community block, sorry.
Yep, Marion is at the podium. So the, uh, council's aware that we had an, so the 2020 application for 2020 CDBG, uh, projects is typically due each year in September-ish. When, uh, we apply to the Commonwealth, DCD for, um, our, uh, we are a state, we're entitlement. There are federal funds that are provided to the Commonwealth under legislation to the Commonwealth. We are an entitlement community in Pennsylvania, so we, per formula, we apply each year at this time of year. We are now, of course, in our partnership with the county, um, Crawford County Planning Commission, administers the CDBG program on, on behalf of the city. And then this year, we had the extra 2020, the CDBG CV, the COVID-related funds. And so the initial public hearing, the first public hearing, was combined for both the COVID funding and the 2020 CDBG application. And so we've already submitted the COVID proposal. So we're talking about tonight just the, quote, "normal annual CDBG funding round." And Marion, I'll let you take it from there.
Uh, so our entitlement this year is three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars. You have two pieces of paper in front of you. The first is, um, different proposals from citizens that we've received. And the second is some staff recommendations on how to spend that three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Some of the things are obligatory, like the six percent to the county. That's contractually written into our cooperation agreement, as is this planning, uh, for two percent, uh, to go towards some sort of planning project.
So Marion, that, that appears on the staff recommended proposals, administration and planning, the first two blocks?
Correct. Typically, you can take out a maximum of eighteen percent for administration. Six percent goes, like I said, to the county, about twelve percent, a little under, so we don't go over, uh, the eighteen percent, uh, city typically takes for staff, uh, time and any additional costs that would make occur, like, uh, advertising or something like that. We've allocated a hundred and four thousand dollars, a little over, to some city paving, which is typical use of some of our, uh, CDBG funds. A couple of these streets that you see, Walnut, uh, Plateau Drive, some of these were on, um, the city's paving schedule for this year, but due to COVID-19 and the backlog that Lindy Paving's having, those were nixed and pushed, uh, to a later date. We typically do spend forty, forty thousand dollars on our code enforcement to pay for our two part-time code enforcement officers. Uh, so that remains the same in this, uh, sta, staff recommendation. Then the last two, uh, allocations for money are to the Crawford County Housing Coalition for their emergency shelter. Uh, they need a new roof on that shelter, on their South Main Street house. Um, and then fifty thousand dollars to Heidi Cooper Park, uh, for some beginning improvements. Uh, and we, we'd also like to use our planning allocation to do a Parks Master Plan for Heidi Cooper Park.
Marion, do you want to, so, um, there were citizens here tonight speaking to, um, I think, tailored to sort of general affordable housing and then Ian to the Common Roots. Um, do you want to talk about the proposals that were received as a result of the, um, public hearing?
Uh, so we had given citizens an opportunity to submit some proposals, which you have here. Uh, a couple, we have for Liberty Street Park. Um, this, this park they're referring to is on the corner of Linden and Liberty. Uh, it used to be a basketball court, but was abandoned, I think, because it's not ADA compliant. That is not going to be able to happen. Reached out to the Housing Authority, uh, and they had different routes that they wanted to go with that area instead of taking any money from the city for that. Common Roots was, offered a proposal to help with drywall, drywall, uh, insulation and some different trim that they needed. And then CHAPS also submitted a, so proposal for some, uh, one of their houses on Park Avenue.
What's the timeline of submitting projects, application, et cetera?
So the second public hearing will be held on August 27th at 6:00 PM. This is held in conjunction with the county. From my understanding, it looks right now that it's going to be an online, uh, hearing as well. So after that point, there'll be a public comment period. Uh, and then sometime in September, council will be asked to authorize submission of the projects.
So the paving project in the city, city staff recommended proposals is targeted in a lower-income area, is that correct?
The majority are, you'll see two outside of the, uh, designated income block groups that HUD and DCD use. Uh, but they primarily serve the Fairmont, uh, Apartments complex, so that they would be a justifiable expense.
Were the, um, the two streets, I think you said, was it Walnut and Plateau, that were pushed back from this year's paving schedule?
Yes.
What funds were going to cover those paving projects?
Those capital funds.
So those are funds borrowed by the city?
So with these being pushed back, sorry, my voice is going to finally go on you. Um, with the, with the city paving being pushed back because of COVID, what's that do for the ones that we were planning on doing in 2021? Does that change those, push those back also, or?
A, as far as the CDBG streets? Uh, not necessarily. There's been some preliminary discussion about once, if council were to approve these streets for paving, technically, these streets wouldn't be paved until 2022, uh, but based on need, uh, we might seek a modification of the CDBG contracts and switch paving for 2021 and 2022. Uh, because some of these streets are in worse condition than the ones on the 2021 CDBG paving schedule.
So my question is, I see in this, in both from staff recommendation and from the public, the emergency shelter roof replacement is on the staff also, correct?
Correct.
So if you take the fifty-two thousand off from that, that project could be a go then? I mean, that's what you're looking at?
Correct.
So when we start looking at the other ones with Liberty Street, South Main, Common Roots, CHAPS, that money's going to have to come out of this pot of money in this staff recommendation.
So the first page is just, um, proposals we received, so council's aware of them. This, the second page is the staff recommendations on how the three hundred and eight thousand would be spent. So CHAPS, Common Roots would not be funded through CDBG this year.
Counsel, I'll, I, I have given a sort of an annual reminder that, um, so I, we have often used CDBG-funded for infrastructure-based projects that might otherwise come from the general fund. So in lieu, for instance, where we can use eligible funds for paving in low-income neighborhoods and eligible streets that would ordinarily have to come out of funds borrowed, um, we are highly leveraged in debt. And so that is something that Debbie and I are very conscious of. We are, um, constantly talk about, it's part of our strategic management planning process, where we can reduce pressure on the general fund and, and not borrow money. Where we can supplant that with grant funding, we look for those opportunities. So for instance, if we're, if, if we would not pave some of these CDBG eligible streets, presumably, we would have to pave them eventually. The only other source of funding then would be our, would be capital funds from which we're borrowing. Um, on the code enforcement side, right, we've, these essentially, these pay a hundred percent of the administr, admin costs, salaries, wages for two part-time code enforcement officers. If we don't fund them through CDBG, we either fund them through the general fund or we eliminate their positions. Um, and so where we can, where we can relieve pressure on the general fund, we, we often have historically in terms of the use of our CDBG funds.
So part of, uh, the, the plan for Remler was from the CDBG grant, correct?
Yes.
Is, how is that going to affect that? Is it going to be this year, next year, or is it going to be?
So Remler was on the 2019 CDBG application. So as it stands right now, it's, uh, is and has always been slated for paving in 2021.
Now, is, is that just paving, or is there curb work going to be done, or?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look at the, the application. Uh, if there's already curbing on Remler, then most likely there would be new curb placed on Remler. If there's not curbing currently, then they wouldn't add curbing.
Or no type of drainage or anything of that nature?
Uh, I don't believe that there is any cost for drainage put in to the, uh, application, but they typically do do some sort of, um, manhole or stormwater work if necessary when they do these types of paving projects.
So the Public Works Department is charged, right, with maintenance of our public infrastructure, including city streets? So they, these streets come to, I mean, these are on their radar in terms of, of priority. Typically, the residential, our, our in-town, our downtown alleys often are curbed. But lots of our residential alleys are not. And, and it's because, A, that we either don't have stormwater infrastructure in those neighborhoods, that, that, once you have curb, you have to, you have to formally establish, um, they're usually lower-volume roads. But typically, the, the public works, but where we can fix and address underlying drainage issues that have long plagued, because those, those then deteriorate our assets if we, if we don't address them. So where we can do those, CDBG doesn't fund those, though. Those would be different funding sources from the stormwater program, um, wouldn't fund a stormwater improvement, for instance. But, but we, um, typically try to improve, um, the, the situation when we address any of these streets.
So there's a second public hearing on this, correct?
Yes, on the 27th, at 6:00 PM.
And that's going to be where, here?
Uh, it will most likely be online. Uh, it's held in conjunction with the county. So the county, we're an OBO under the county, um, as is Titusville, Vernon, uh...
So it'd be one public hearing that the county would hold on behalf of each of those grantees, that's the OBO.
And they'll make arrangements for the public to have their input, then?
Right. So to be clear, though, this, this city staff recommendation would be the proposal then submitted to the county for that second public hearing? Absent a different direction from council?
At which point, it's really just an opportunity for residents to weigh in. There's not a ton of opportunity then to make any changes to the application that's set in. I mean, practically speaking, there's not all the time.
Depending on, I think, the input that we receive after the public comment, um, and how forceful that is, uh, we could come back in front of council after that, that time and, and address any concerns or new suggestions. Uh, it typically won't be taking new suggestions so much. But if something were to come up, we could come back before council, before council authorizes their, the submission of this.
Is the, um, six thousand, uh, is that going to be the extent of the Parks Master Plan? Or will we use some of the accrued planning?
Uh, so contractually, every year, we have to put in the two percent. Uh, so we have been doing that since becoming an OBO of the county. So it would be the, the combination of those years' funding to go towards this. Probably also look to some DCNR funding to help, um, with that as well.
Does it make sense, uh, I mean, I'm a proponent for investing in Heidi Cooper Park. I'm glad to see it on here. I guess I just want to point out that we're going to plan for the park and invest, like, a lot of money in it before the plan is done. I don't know if that's an issue with...
Uh, I, the, the thought there is that these things need done. And Heidi Cooper Park is actually no longer in, uh, LMI block group, according to HUD. So we have to also provide some justification for why we want to focus on that park with CDBG funds. But those things, the basketball court needs new, new asphalt, the fencing is going to need, uh, replaced. So these are things that we know are glaring that need to be completed at this park.
So even though there are a large number of low and moderate-income housing units in the neighborhood, it's not designated as such?
That's right. Um, it's because it gets lumped into, uh, the plateau. Uh, so it cut offline for the, the block group, is literally right at the border of Heidi Cooper Park.
So in our application, we'll have to provide the justification of, of how that park serves low-to-moderate income citizens and, uh... So, and to be clear, right, once these, once these funds are committed in a grant contract, we would have three years to spend them. So in terms of the park planning process, we would have time to conduct the Mass, Parks Master Plan planning process before we would be implementing and extending the, the improvement dollars.
Any other comments? Any other, uh, any, would you like to add anything, Marion?
Uh, nope.
Any comments from council? Okay, we'll move on to Resolution C.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that whereas the City of...
Thank you.
The City of Meadville has an opportunity for state-of-the-art electronic data management by participating in the Pennsylvania Electronic Government Consortium Municipal Legacy Data Scanning Program. And whereas the Pennsylvania Electronic Government Consortium is a private, not-for-profit civic-based organization for the purpose of elevating and promoting state-of-the-art data management, collaboration, and governance through education, technical assistance, collaboration, and other programming for local governments. And whereas the Pennsylvania Electronic Government Consortium is developing a municipal legacy data scanning and digitalization program in partnership with public and private sector organizations and entities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas the purpose of the Municipal Legacy Dat, Data Scanning and Digitalization Program is to provide local governments with a comprehensive planning, organization, coordination, and resources needed to digitize their vast collections of paper-based records. of paper-based records and implement records, governance, standards, policies, and best practices recognized by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for proper preparation, retention, and disposition of public records. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city of Meaville, by and through the council of the city of Meaville, supports the municipal legacy data scanning and digitalization program and will coordinate with other participating local governments and the Pennsylvania Electronic Government Consortium to undertake activities for the program in order to make the program available for all.
Motion, please. So move. Second?
Aye.
Uh, so counsel, my notice to counsel, this is a, a fledgling effort of, in Northwest Pennsylvania, largely smaller or rural municipalities, trying to band together under the direction, um, under this consortium being put together by Alan Kugler, who is, is a consultant. Alan's a, probably the foremost consultant in Pennsylvania when it, when it comes to regional governance, councils of government. Um, and so this is a, an effort of Alan and other municipalities to attempt to seek resources from the Commonwealth to provide common software, common technology, common equipment to, to manage data as it describes there. Um, so this would just be officially going on record as our interest in partnership and participation in the consortium for this purpose.
In other words, it doesn't cost us money yet.
Where does that make things?
Correct. Any other discussion for Andy?
No.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution E.
Resolved by the council of the city of Meaville that whereas in accordance with the provisions of section 1359.02 of article 1359, the land subdivision regulations of the Meaville Municipal Code, the final plat for Richard A. Metzger subdivision 2020-1, minor subdivision submitted to the city as prepared by Allegheny Professional Services LLC, registered servicer involving assessment parcel numbers 3500-9-B-6 and 3500-9-B-7, is hereby one approved and two approved for recording. No public improvements guarantee is required because there are no public improvements planned or required by the said land subdivision regulations.
Motion, please. So move. Second?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion.
Counsel, we reviewed this briefly at last meeting. We'd actually had it on the agenda and realized that it hadn't been yet approved by the county planning commission. So we did review and discuss it. Um, and the county planning commission has acted. You want to just quickly review the...
I, I have copies. Did, did everyone want to take a look at the copies again? I hope you have subdivision status.
They've got a, the small version.
Oh, you have a small version?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, you recall, uh, this is on Catherine Street, just uphill from the Grove Street Hospital between Pine and Arch. It involves two parcels owned by Richard Metzger, uh, adjacent to each other, uh, 984 and 986 Catherine Street. Um, you'll see currently the, the, actually, it says previous lot line right down in the middle, which is in that brick area, is actually the current lot line that's proposed to be moved, uh, northward. You'll see new lot line immediately adjacent to the, uh, wall of the house on the, on the, the north side. Uh, this, the, the point of this is to essentially, uh, take the garage, which is between the two houses, place it under one lot, so they can make both properties more saleable. Um, but, both of these lots are currently undersized and have, lack current width, so they're already non-conforming. The zoning hearing board granted further, uh, ver- granted variances to, uh, lot width, lot size, and setbacks to bring it into compliance with the zoning ordinance by a variance. So as presented today, it's in compliance with the zoning and the subdivision land development ordinance, and is, would be proper to approve it for recording. Any questions?
That's pretty clear. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Counsel member statements. Jim, I'll start with you tonight.
Oh, thank you. Um, just something briefly. Uh, tax notices, per capita and property taxes come out. Um, I know often we have problems collecting the per capita tax. And one of the reasons might be that if you have a property tax bill on, a per capita tax bill, they come in the same envelope. I made that mistake the other day. Uh, I just said, oh, it's per capita. I might, I left my property tax, uh, bill in the envelope. Fortunately, Diana caught that. Um, so make sure you get both parts, or both bills out so that we don't have a problem down the road with delinquent taxes of any kind and enforcement costs. Uh, other than that, enjoy the evening. Feels like fall out there. Sir?
Well, I'm just glad to see you're back and feeling better. And again, I'd like to thank, uh, Katie and everyone for the work that they've done. Um, I just want to remind people, you know, continue to wear your mask, continue to support, um, getting our country, our city back to, to health. And I just, uh, just want to say that I'm just enjoying and still learning, and it's great, um, being on, being a part of the city here. And, uh, again, thank you guys for all that you've done, um, and all that we're, we're going to do for Meaville. Thank you.
Laura?
Uh, sure. Um, just real quickly, uh, I have been working, um, a group of residents has been leading, uh, to update the city's climate action plan. Uh, they applied for and have been accepted to, uh, a cohort of communities that, with the support of DEP, will, um, conduct a greenhouse gas inventory during the fall of 2020. Um, uh, this could be, uh, an update to the city's own greenhouse gas inventory from 2010 that measures 2006 emissions. Um, I've committed to work with the group as they go through the program and to update the city's greenhouse gas inventory and use that data to reevaluate the city's 2010 climate action plan. Uh, I know we had a full agenda tonight, but hopefully we can get it on, uh, the agenda for discussion next time. Uh, and I, and I will say too that Larry and I met with, uh, members of the NAACP as well as, um, uh, Andy and Chief Totten, uh, to continue the conversation and to continue examining policing in Meaville. Um, and I, I'd say I'm encouraged by, by the work that's going on there.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate Andy and Chief Totten, um, and the, the work and time that they've put into, uh, kind of, um, uh, meeting the, the concerns of, of our residents. So thanks.
Sean?
Uh, I'd just like to remind people, what, what's the taxes that are due the end of August?
So this is your 2020 city and county real estate taxes.
They were due in June.
The...
Extended.
Correct. The, the discount period was April 30th. The face value period was June 30th and extended to August 31st.
Okay. So just want to remind people to make sure to get that paid. I think I already paid mine, so that's good.
And just, just sorry to interrupt, but as counselman Roa reminded, so again, because those are in this, your per capita are mailed in the same envelope with your real estate, your school portion of your real estate taxes, um, that, again, remember, except you might, you might have your real estate taxes escrowed, and you might think you don't need to do anything with that envelope and just put it in your folder or something. Um, in fact, you know, your per capita bills are in there, and typically your escrow bill would go to your mortgage company, so just pay attention.
Yes. Okay. Uh, I just, I was just thinking about how we're gonna miss out on the fair here in a few weeks. And I was thinking about all the things we just missed out. This last weekend was Thunder in the City. Uh, second Saturdays, which Autumn's involved in, and second Saturday night live concerts, I would always go to them. And boy, it's been a beautiful summer. We did miss out on a big bit. So just something I was thinking about. And I wanted to go see a movie, and we just decided we're not ready yet. And I want to go see Jaws. It's out at the theater, and I just, I hadn't seen it in the theater since I was a little kid. I just, something I was thinking about. But, uh, just take care of yourselves and be kind to other people, please.
Yes.
Seems to be the prevalent thing right now, be nasty.
Well, first, Larry, thank you for filling in for me.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Appreciate it. Um, and for those who kept in touch with me while I was in the hospital, thank you for the cards and, and all the phone calls and things. Um, I can't tell you how important it is to wear a mask. When I was down at UPMC, I couldn't believe the amount of, of patients that were in a ten-floor hospital and the care that they took. Um, it was really, I hope you don't have to go through that situation, but if, if you're hospitalized, you really get a rude awakening of what life is really about right now. You don't get to see your family. You don't get to talk to your, your kids don't get to come in. Um, you're kind of left there on your own. And the staff down there, I can, both Meaville Medical Center and UPMC tries very hard to make that comfort level with the patients being in the hospital. So if you know somebody that's in the hospital, recommendation, send them a card. Make sure that they're, that they know that there are people still out there. It's, uh, it's pretty lonely out there, you know, ten days in the hospital. So I appreciate you guys contacting me and things. So with that, I ask for an adjournment. Please stay safe. Make sure you wear your mask when you're out there.
Yes.
You don't want to get this virus.
I've lost two family members in two months from it, so...
Lost a friend in New York just last week. So please, wear the mask. They're, they're there. Be safe.
So move. Your Honor, could we adjourn to executive session for real estate and litigation?
Sure. Motion? Second?
See you next week.
Roll call.
You seconded it?
Yeah, Larry did. Jim made the motion.
What?
Jim made the motion.
Yep.
Larry seconded.
Got it.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.